Court of Appeals of Tennessee is now in session. God save the United States of America, the state of Tennessee, and this honorable court.
Good morning. Welcome to the Western Section Court of Appeals. I'd like to introduce your panel this morning. I have Judge Kenny Armstrong from Memphis, Judge Carmen McGee from Savannah, and I'm Judge Arnold Golden from Memphis. I'm sure y'all are both experienced lawyers. You know the rules here. We each side has 15 minutes. Mister, I said, Mister Colbert, you can reserve up to five minutes for your rebuttal if you choose to. You just let me know how much time you would like. Any questions?
No, sir.
They call the case, they call the case, Mr.?
Candace Mosby versus Fayette County Board of Education at all.
All right, Mr. Colbert?
Morning, Your Honor. I'm Rick Colbert from Nashville, and I represent Candace Mosby. I would like to reserve two minutes of my time for rebuttal.
All right, sir.
This case involves, this is our appeal from the chancellor's involuntary dismissal of our action at the close of the plaintiff's proof at trial. The case involves the interplay of two statutes. One is the continuing contract law, Tennessee Code Annotated 49-5-409, under which employment for a non-tenured teacher continues from year to year unless it is affirmatively non-renewed by a certain date. The other statute is Tennessee Code Annotated 49-2-301, Subpart D2A, which is a part of what is known as the First to the Top Act. It's an act that was passed in 2010 by the legislature in order to secure a substantial federal race-to-the-top grant. And in that particular portion of the act, the legislature required, as part of the act, the legislature implemented, well, the State Board actually implemented, but the legislature required a new elaborate evaluation system for teachers so that all employment decisions would be more data-driven. And in this particular portion of the act, the legislature required that evaluations shall be a factor in all employment decisions. They included a partial list, including but not limited to, and in that list, they included retention and termination. And then in State Board of Education Rule 5.201, which was promulgated pursuant to that act, they also concluded the same requirement that evaluations shall be a factor in these employment decisions, and they expressly mentioned dismissal in their list. So what happened in this case is Ms. Mosby was a non-tenured teacher in the Fayette County school system. She worked as a guidance counselor, and she started there in January of 2013. She worked through the end of the 2015-16 school year. She was non-renewed, no cause given, this was not a dismissal for cause. She was non-renewed at the end of the 15-16 school year by Superintendent Dr. Marlin King. Dr. King ended her employment without consideration of her evaluations, even though it's required that the evaluations be a factor in that decision under the First to the Top Act. We tried-
Mr. Colbert?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
You are not challenging the timeliness of the notice she was given, are you?
No, I'm not.
All right.
The trial court, we, the case went to trial, and as I said, it was dismissed at the close of the plaintiff's proof involuntarily.
Mr. Colbert, does it, question, does it, does it make any difference? Does the act require the superintendent to review the evaluations? Or can someone other than, or can anyone review the evaluations?
Well, the act require superintendent, the, no. It, the First to the Top Act doesn't require that the superintendent review the evaluations, but the, but the continuing contract law requires that the superintendent make the decision to non-renew. And since he is the decision-maker, it's our contention that he has to consider the evaluations in making his non-renewal decision.
In this case, wasn't the, wasn't the, the letter that indicated the non-renewal, didn't that come from the superintendent?
It came from the superintendent's office. We, we, we had a claim in this case. We didn't believe that the superintendent actually made the decision to non-renew. We believed it was made by a subordinate. We had some testimony to that effect, but there was conflicting testimony about that. And the chancellor, in her findings at the close of our proof, found that the, that the superintendent did make the decision to non-renew. We haven't challenged that on this appeal. We don't think it was right, but we haven't challenged that finding of fact on this appeal. We're only challenging the legal, her legal conclusion that Ms. Mosby has no right of action to challenge the non-renewal for failure to consider the evaluations. That's, that's the sole claim that we're, we're pursuing on this appeal. That's an issue of law, we believe, that's subject to de novo review by this court. The continuing contract law itself, which is the law under which Ms. Mosby was non-renewed, doesn't provide any remedy for any failure to comply with the law. But in Snell versus Brothers 45 years ago, the Tennessee Supreme Court evidently found an implied right of action for breach of a one-year contract of employment if the timeliness requirement in that, in the continuing contract law is not met. This court actually reached a similar result last fall in a case we appealed from Memphis, Dallas versus the Shelby County Board of Education. There, the notice of non-renewal wasn't received by the deadline, and this court determined that Ms. Dallas had the right to pursue an action for breach of a one-year contract of employment on the basis of the Snell decision, not based on anything that gives her that right of action in the statute, but on the basis of Snell. Now, as I said earlier, in 2010, in the First to the Top Act, the legislature began requiring that evaluations be considered on all employment decisions involving teachers. It didn't go in and amend every statute that, that, that deals with an employment decision. It didn't amend, I mean, it made some amendments to the tenure law in terms of defining the causes for dismissal, but it didn't, it didn't put an amendment in that required that. There's a statutory provision for dismissal for cause of a non-tenured teacher in 49-2-301. They didn't amend that. There's the transfer statute in 49-5-510. They didn't amend that to say in the statute, you have to consider evaluations. What they did was they put a broad requirement in the First to the Top Act that in all these employment decisions, you have to consider the evaluations. You don't necessarily, the evaluations aren't necessarily dispositive, but they at least have to be a factor. They have to be considered. Now, in Jones versus the Knox County Board of Education, that's a Court of Appeals decision out of, from 2015, out of the Eastern section of the Court of Appeals. We filed suit, this was under the transfer statute, 49-5-510, and we alleged that the teacher was unlawfully transferred. She was demoted, but it's treated as a transfer under the law. And we alleged that she was unlawfully transferred because her evaluation wasn't considered. The chancellor granted a motion to dismiss for failure to state a claim. The Court of Appeals reversed. The Court of Appeals held that we had, we had adequately stated a claim that, that the transfer was unlawful because of the failure to consider her evaluations in light of the requirement of the First to the Top Act.
Teacher, let me ask, the teacher in that case, was that teacher a tenured teacher or a non-tenured teacher?
Well, teacher was a tenured teacher. Yes, that teacher was a tenured teacher. But, but the, but the point is that the transfer is reviewed under statute 49-5-510, which in and of itself doesn't, doesn't provide a right of action on its own terms, and it says nothing about evaluations. But, but the court said that the requirement in the First to the Top Act was enough to give the teacher a right of action for an invalid transfer if the evaluations weren't considered. In, in Geller versus the Fayette County Board of Education, Judge McGee, I know you, we tried that case in your court a few years ago, and that case was decided actually last week in the Tennessee Supreme Court. The decision was not in our favor. We filed a petition for rehearing yesterday. But there's an important point that the court made at page 22 of the slip opinion in that case. The Tennessee Supreme Court, even though they found that Mr. Geller's transfer wasn't subject to this requirement because he was transferred because he couldn't serve in the position he served in, he didn't have the requisite license. But they did say, they recognized that in some cases, the evaluation of a teacher may be highly relevant to an employment decision. And they cited the Jones versus Knox County Board of Education for that proposition. So, so we contend that there's no reason why a right of action should be implied for failure to consider an evaluation under the transfer statute, as it was in Jones, but not under the continuing contract law, the law that's at issue here. There's no reason why, as Snell says, there should be a right of action for breach of contract if the notice is not, is procedurally untimely. But there should not be a right of action for breach of contract for a substantive failure to consider what the law says must be considered when the non-renewal decision is made.
Let me ask, is your argument limited to the failure to consider the evaluation and not the failure to properly observe?
That's correct, Your Honor. The, 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 the failure to properly observe, that was, that was intended as proof that the evaluations couldn't have been considered because they weren't properly done. But at the end of the day, when we got to, to the trial, Dr. King testified, and he admitted on multiple occasions, which we've cited in our brief, that he didn't consider any part of the evaluations. He didn't, we believe the observations that were done were, we had proof that those observations were falsified, that they weren't actually done. The reports were made up. But Dr. King said he didn't consider them anyway. And so, once he admitted that he didn't consider them anyway, that proof became largely irrelevant to our claim. Our claim is that the evaluations had to be considered, and they weren't. The fact that they weren't done was evidence that they couldn't have been considered.
Were they not considered by anyone? That's, that sort of goes back to the question I asked you earlier about whether they had to be considered by the superintendent. Were they, was there any proof that they weren't considered by anyone that may have made the recommendation to the superintendent?
Well, let me, let me just say this. The, the proof was, and this case was dismissed, I hope this answers your question, Your Honor. The, the case was dismissed at the close of our proof. We didn't call the principal to testify. We called the director. The director admitted that he made the decision to non-renew. He admitted that it was his responsibility to make the decision to non-renew, and he admitted that he didn't consider the evaluations. Now, I think at that point, that's sufficient proof from the plaintiff's standpoint to show that the evaluations weren't considered as part of the decision to, to non-renew this teacher. I think maybe, maybe if we'd gotten to the defense proof, perhaps Mr. Sellers might have put on the principal, and the principal might have testified to that effect, and we might have had a chance to cross-examine her to see if she really reviewed them and made a recommendation in light of the review of them or not. The proof we have in our case is that the individual responsible for making the decision did not review the evaluations and did not consider them in making that decision.
All right.
I, I think my-
You have your rebuttal time. You'll have your rebuttal time, Mr. Colbert.
All right, thank you.
All right. Mr. Sellers?
Yes, Your Honor. May it please the court, I'm Andrew Sellers, and I am representing the Fayette County Board of Education and Dr. Marlin King in this matter. I want to address the question that Judge Golden has asked a couple of times now regarding, is there any requirement regarding who reviews the evaluations? And I believe that is a succinct point in that there was no proof by the plaintiffs whether Dr. Watkins reviewed these evaluations or not. And obviously, it was Dr. King's testimony that Dr. Watkins was involved in the process regarding the plaintiff's non-renewal. So it is our contention that it is the plaintiff's burden of proof to show that nobody reviewed these evaluations. It is not the, it's not the burden on the defendant to show that they were reviewed. So to address Judge Golden's question, I believe they've not, have not carried their burden of proof regarding whether anyone reviewed the evaluations or not in the process of making the decision to non-renew the plaintiff. Going further, as pointed out by the plaintiff, they're relying upon Tennessee Code Annotated Section 49-1-302, and specifically subdivision D2A. It is our contention from the defendant's side that this does not create a call, a private cause of action for an individual, primarily because this statute sets forth the powers and the duties for the State Board of Education. It is not dealing with local education agencies. There's a different chapter within the education statutes that outlines the duties and obligations of the local education agencies. Whereas the statute that the plaintiff is now relying upon is a, the State Board, and that is who it's dealing with. And specifically, the subdivision that they are relying upon in this matter, the subdivision 2, D2A, is a mandate to the Teacher Evaluation Advisory Committee, which was created in the subsection before in subsection D1. And what they're being told to do is to develop and recommend board guidelines and criteria for annual evaluation of all teachers and principals employed by local education agencies, including a local-level grievance procedure. When a court is looking at and trying to determine whether a statutory provision provides a claim, they must look at three factors. And those factors are whether the party bringing the cause of action is an intended beneficiary within the protection of the statute. Number two, whether there is any indication of legislative intent expressed or implied to create or deny the private right of action. And three, whether implying such remedy is consistent with the underlying purposes of the legislation. In addressing the first factor, it is clear, and, and I, and I kind of feel like the first factor and the third factor are somewhat similar in this instance, because it's very clear, as pointed out by Mr. Colbert, that the purpose of the statute that we're dealing with here was a mandate to the State Board, and it sets forth their duties and powers. But it is also the primary purpose of the statute is to develop a way to make more data-driven decisions and come up with a new evaluation process or, or further expand the evaluation process that was in place. This was not like, Mr. Colbert keeps referring to cases dealing with the transfer statute or the continuing contract statute or the tenure act statute. Those statutes are in a different section of the education statutes that specifically deal with the rights and obligations of local education agencies in dealing with their personnel. So there is a big distinction between those statutes and, and having a right of action for a teacher to bring a cause of action under those statutes compared to the statute that we're here about today. But the overhaul, based upon the overall comprehensive nature of the statute of 302, it certainly is not specifically there to provide protections to individual teachers. And I, and going, moving to the second factor regarding legislative intent, I think this is very important. Because included in that subsection of the statute is also a requirement to provide a local-level grievance procedure. And I understand that it is the plaintiff's contention that the claim is really based upon the employment decision and not challenging the observations or the evaluations themselves. But I believe, and I believe the trial court was correct in finding this, there, there's a purpose for the local grievance procedure. And that local grievance procedure is for the opportunity for a teacher to challenge the, the procedure and how their evaluations or observations, if you want to, or how they're carried out. And to allow the plaintiff, Ms. Mosby, to sit on her hands when the underlying basis of her claim is, well, they didn't review the evaluations because they didn't do the evaluation properly, and to allow her to basically, even though she admitted she knew what the requirements were for the observations, and she's claiming that, well, they really weren't done, but she also admits that at no time did she go to her immediate supervisor to make a complaint. She never went to the superintendent, Dr. King, to make a complaint. She just sat on her hands. She didn't do anything. And now she comes saying, well, your, your non-renewal is improper because you didn't get, you didn't follow the evaluation properly. And I believe there is some requirement on behalf of a individual to follow that grievance procedure if they are challenging the way the evaluations are done, such as the, which is the underlying basis of the plaintiff's claim here. But I think even going a step further, that State Board Policy 5.201, which was promulgated in response to this statute, and in Policy 5.201, it even goes a step further. Not only does it talk about the local-level grievance procedure, but it also says that if, if the complaint or the claim is based upon the employment decision itself, that there are, that it would fall under then-existing due process statutes. It's very clear that in the Policy 5.201, that the intent was to deny any type of right of action under this statute or the policy, because it specifically references, here are your remedies. Your remedy is either under the grievance procedure, as outlined in the statute and the policy, but also if it's based upon the employment decision itself, then there are already due process statutes in place that give you protection.
Let me ask you, in connection with the grievance procedures, is there anything in the evaluations that were done that indicated that the appellate was not performing at a satisfactory level such that she would have known that she needed to file a grievance?
Well, Your, Your Honor, I think in answering that question, the proof at trial by the plaintiff was this. It was her claim that the observations were not even being done. It was her contention that the assistant principal was bringing her the observation form, asking her to do the self-score portion of the form, which she would do. It was then her contention that the assistant principal then took that form and simply filled out the, the scores without actually observing her. That is her claim. That was her testimony. So it wasn't a matter of, so, yes, her claim is that they weren't being done properly, because she's claiming they weren't being done at all, that basically the assistant principal was falsifying the observation, even though she admits that she was signing off on the observations as well. I hope that answers your question.
Well, well, not, not entirely. So was the evaluation satisfactory or not?
I think at the end of the day, Your Honor, I think, I forgot what her level of effectiveness score was. I think it may have ended up being a three, but I just don't remember, because that kind of brings another point into this. Because at the time, the decision to non-renew is made, at least 40% of the data that is needed to complete the evaluation is not even in possession of the school board yet. Dr. King testified that the T-VOS scores and the other student achievement data that is part of the evaluation is not even received until midsummer. So it's almost an impossibility to comply with the statute of saying you, you have to review the evaluation, which contains more than just the observations. But when you don't even get, because that vote, that data is provided and calculated by the state. It is not done at the local level. The, the local education agency is relying upon and waiting upon receiving that data from the state, and that data is not even received until midsummer. So you have, in one essence, the continuing contract law that says you have to give them notice by a certain date, but yet you don't even have the complete evaluation until after that date has already expired. So you have somewhat a conflicting laws here of you must give notice by, by the end of the school year essentially, while also not giving you the full evaluation. And now you have an individual saying, well, you have to review the evaluation. So in essence, you would never be able to review the evaluation for that school year when the decision is being made to non-renew a teacher or whatever personnel decision is being made, the complete evaluation. And I think it would also place an undue burden upon superintendents if you're requiring the superintendent to review those evaluations, because in Fayette County, it was Dr. King's testimony that Fayette County, which I would not believe to be one of the larger school systems, there was 300 teachers or certified personnel that he would have, or licensed personnel. So if you put a requirement upon a superintendent to review every evaluation of every teacher every year before he makes decisions about any employment, plats, renewals, non-renewals, transfers, you're placing an undue burden on some school superintendents. But going back to the factors, so it is certainly our vermin that under the second factor, there is an intent by the legislature not to create a private cause of action. I think it even is pointed out, as pointed out by Mr. Colbert, that in response to this act, there were some amendments made to the Teacher Tenure Act. So if the legislature intended for this requirement for personnel decisions to apply to local education, education agencies, we certainly believe that the legislature could easily have gone and amended or created a statute that said that directly to the local education agencies, not simply making, placing an obligation on a local education agency based on a small clause in a comprehensive statute that's directed to the State Board of Education. In conclusion, Your Honor, I would state that we would respectfully request for the court to affirm the trial court's decision and uphold the involuntary dismissal in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colbert, you have two minutes. All right.
There, I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay.
I, I want to address first Judge Armstrong, your question about the evaluations. The evaluations, the observations for 2015-16 were satisfactory. There were no observations done in 2014-15 at all. But the ones in 15-16 were satisfactory to suggest that Ms. Mosby needed to grieve that before any employment decision had been made. Really would put a non-tenured teacher like her- Uh, really would put a non-tenure teacher like her to sort of a Hobson's choice, uh, filing of, of either accepting a, a, a good observation result or filing a grievance claiming her supervisor, the assistant principal, didn't really do his job and falsified the, the observation reports. Uh, she was a non-tenure teacher. She was trying to maintain employment. The, there were, uh, uh, Mr. Sellers mentioned that there were 300 teachers, according to the Director of Schools in the school system in Fayette County. But those are all teachers, tenured and non-tenured teachers. Uh, the, the non-renewal duty that comes at the end of a school year, uh, it only applies to non-tenured teachers. I asked, um, Dr. King during the trial, uh, how many, how that broke down between tenured and not, and he couldn't tell me. He didn't know how many were tenured, how many were non-tenured. There, there, Mr. Sellers mentioned that the rule from the State Board of Education talks about due process, but there is no due process statute that accompanies the transfer statute, 495510. There's no due process provision in that statute. But the Court of Appeals in the Jones case held that a teacher has a right to challenge a transfer for failure to consider her evaluations. So, so there's no reason why the same consideration should not be given to the teacher who's challenging her non-renewal on the same basis.
Mr. Colbert, I, you time's up, but I did have one question. Mr. Sellers, uh, indicated that, that this statute is applicable to the State Board and not to the local boards. What's the distinction, uh, as to this statute versus the other statutes that you've been discussing as to whether or not they're applicable to the state boards versus the local boards?
Well, I think his, the, the, the non-renewal statute, like the transfer statute, are both applicable to, they're actually applicable to the Director of Schools. The director has those responsibilities.
That would be, that would be local then.
Local. I think the statute he was talking about was the first to the top act, which has the broad requirement that evaluations shall be a factor in all employment decisions. There is much, there's, there's much of the first of the top act that was directory to the State Board of Education. But that requirement, the, all those employment decisions are made at the local level. So clearly, the legislature was requiring that when the State Board of Education puts together its evaluation requirements and, 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 and all the parts that accompany those requirements, it included a requirement that the evaluations must be considered in employment decisions. Those decisions are made at the local level. And the State Board of Education did that. In State Board of Education Policy 5.201, which is in the record, they included an identical requirement telling local school systems that evaluations shall be a factor in all these employment decisions. And then local boards of education adopted their own policies. There's one in the record here, Policy 5.109, I believe, which implements the State Board's evaluation requirements. So that requirement has made its way down. It was intended for local school systems, and it's made its way down to this system.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, we'll, uh, prepare, uh, an opinion as soon as possible and get it to you. Thank you for your argument today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor.
This honorable court is now in recess.